Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call the West Covina City Council to order. This is February 18th, and I hope everybody had a nice President's Day. I know we opened the new Lou Seals Restaurant yesterday, so if you haven't been there, go by, it's great food. And it was a great, actually, weekend in the city of West Covina. We also had a big four-wheel parts store open, so pretty exciting. We will start off tonight with our invocation as Pastor Samuel Martinez here. Please come forward. Thank you. Please rise.
Father, we gather together this evening. We thank you first of all for the many blessings upon our country, especially the freedoms that we enjoy, Father, and that allow us to gather together this evening. We pray for our soldiers and all our law enforcement officers that are safeguarding our freedoms today. We ask you to keep them safe, Father, especially our men and women that are in Afghanistan and in Iraq. And we ask you to comfort their families as they are away from their families. Grant this evening wisdom to our mayor and our city council and all in authority in the city, direct their decisions tonight. And, Father, remembering the words of the Jewish psalmist who stated that by the blessing of the upright, the city is exalted. I bless West Covina and its residents, our schools, our businesses, and our neighborhoods. I call our businesses prospering, our neighborhoods crime-free, our schools safe heavens for our children. The Lord bless you and keep you and lift up His countenance upon you, West Covina. The Lord make His face shine upon you and grant you peace, nothing missing, nothing broken. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Councilmember Warshaw, would you lead us in the part?
Place your right hand over your heart and begin with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk Roll Call.
Mayor Hereford.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Sykes.
Here.
Councilman Spence.
Here.
Councilmember Toma.
Here.
Councilmember Warshaw.
Here. Reporting now from closed session, City Attorney.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the public. The city council and the successor agency met in closed session to discuss three matters of existing litigation. Those matters were City of West Covina versus Hassan Imports Partnership, which is a Los Angeles Superior Court case. And there were two bankruptcy cases, Henry Hassan Imports Partnership, bankruptcy court. And the other item is also Henry Hassan Imports Partnership Debt or United States Bankruptcy Court. On all three of these items, there was an extensive briefing made by special counsel to the city council and successor agency. Various options were discussed. The successor agency board and the city council gave direction to special counsel on how to proceed on this matter, and there was no reportable action taken. That's the end of my report.
Okay, thank you. Let the record reflect that I was not in closed session. I've been a little ill, and so I didn't come in early for that. Changes to the agenda, City Manager?
No, there are no changes to the agenda tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We don't have any presentations. I know there will be a presentation during the oral communications, but let's start with our oral communications. Vicky Shalaga and Anita Ron.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members, visitors, and city officials. We're here to speak on our Night on the Town that's coming up, May 21st. Anita Ron here is my zone chair. She's a little bit above me, so I'm going to let her talk about, a little bit about the Lions and then Night on the Town. Thank you.
It's truly a pleasure to come here and just let you know of something that's very dear to my heart, which is West Covina Lions. I've been a member for 14 years, and one of the reasons why is because our mission for the Lions Club is to serve. And that is one of the things that we do throughout the community of West Covina. And some of the things people say, what do you do? What is Lions all about? And a lot of the things that we do are probably very significant, but very, we do things much silently, quietly, and to the beat of our own horn, I would say. West Covina Lions is very much known for fundraising, rolling up our sleeves, giving back to the community, doing assessments throughout the year and finding out what is a need for our community and where we could help. Some of the things that we have done in the past, as Lion Vicky has said, our president currently, about the fundraiser Night of the Town, and that's one of our largest fundraisers, and we've been doing it for over 44 years. The funds that come out of that fundraiser actually help provide vision screening for children here in West Covina Unified. In addition, for example, last year, October 2013, we provided over 300 vision screenings for members of our community at large, and we were able to provide vision with glasses at the same time. Many communities wouldn't even be able to get something like that in their communities. And with our strength that we've been in so many years here in West Covina, we were able to get, we were very fortunate to provide that for our community and our citizens of West Covina. In addition, we do events such as we have services that we go into our community and we figure out what is needed. And if there's a painting of a house that needs to be done, which we've done in the past, we do it. If there's kids in the community of West Covina that need special assistance as far as reading, we go ahead and do that as well. So every president decides on what is going to happen or what significant areas are needed in our community. But one of the things we do do best is roll up our sleeves and make sure we do it. And like Vicky has said, we are having our fundraiser, which is Night of the Town, which takes a great amount of volunteerism. It starts from January all the throughout the springing time till May, and this time till May 21st, which is a Wednesday, that we will be providing our largest fundraiser. At that fundraiser, we will have, you'll have an opportunity to meet, silent auction, meals that are being provided from our local restaurants, entertainment, beverages, and a ticket to go to the night, the movie night. If you can't do it that day, it's, you could do a rain check for another day to be able to go to any of the Regal theaters and use your ticket. The tickets are $25. Like I explained, it's fun, entertainment, and it's, every dollar that is made goes right back into our community. This year, we're asking that the city of West Covina actually can assist us in becoming cosponsors for the event. We think it's a great event. It brings much synergy into the community. Every dollar that is raised goes right back into helping out to making West Covina fun and a beautiful place to live in, and we're asking for your support this year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council, staff. At this time here, I'd like to call up Don Gassovich and Mr. Johnson. Is there any other members that are with the memorial team, our committee? And Steve, if I could get you down here, if at all possible, I bet you it is. I'd like to, we're prepared to make a presentation tonight. And with the new possible revenues that are coming in. With the new possible revenues that are coming in to help with the memorial that we're building here in West Covina, the VFW has taken somewhat the lead here in trying to get donations and stuff, and I have to tell you, it's been a little bit difficult. But for those people that have donated, we greatly appreciate it. And one person that's here tonight, she told me not to mention her name, so I guess I won't, but she flat stopped me on the way out of here after we talked about the memorial, and she placed a donation in our hands. And we've had the Women's Club that has made a donation, as well as the Rotary Club, and we were glad to get a check from Athens. And then small checks that came in from the community do mean a lot and helps very much. At this time here, Steve, I'd like to present this check to the mayor for the memorial fund. Did you want the envelope?
Sure.
All right, God, I was hoping to save that. But anyway, it's a little bit more than $3,800 at the VFW that has been able to raise for this memorial fund. Don Gassovich here has been on top of this. That money hasn't moved. It just keeps growing just a little bit at a time. We're not ceasing requesting donations. So if you still want to donate, you can donate to the city of West Covina and market for the memorial fund, or you can come to the VFW or mail it into the VFW. Be glad you got your check. And we'll continue to raise money, and hopefully that will get this project done. It's a few years overdue, and Mr. Johnson here has come up with some really nice ideas, and we're going to try to continue on this. We're hoping maybe to even get a car show in here to get some more funds for this memorial. Steve, I want to thank you very much for your support in the city council, the previous council, especially this council here. And a special thanks to Councilman Warshaw for coming up with a really unique idea and the way to raise a little bit more funds so we can get this project taken care of. So would you like to say anything, Don? Are you pretty well prepared? How about you?
No, I'm just glad it's moving forward.
You usually have a lot to say. Are you sure?
I'll say something.
Okay. Steve, thank you very much.
Let's get a picture. Let me just say, on behalf of the city of West Covina, we want to thank VFW Post 8620 for all their support of our veterans and for their support of this veterans memorial here in West Covina. It's something we've been trying to do for a while, you know, and looks like it's going to be a reality maybe this year. So please pass back to the members all of our support for them, and thank you for all your service. Thank you. All right. You going to take one more? Rookie. Okay, thank you so much. Whoops, you going to hang on to that?
I guess it's ours, isn't it?
Yes. I was trying to give it to Chris, but that didn't pan out. Next speaker is Lloyd Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor Hereford and council members. There's a couple of things I would like to know. First, I would like to know, are we going to keep spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on a lose-lose situation, which we will never recover the tax dollars lost on the dealership lawsuit? This council must remember wasted tax dollars being spent on this situation, which we will never recover the lost taxes being spent on illegal maneuvering should come to an end. And the one question I need to ask, which I heard, and I want to take it as far as it is until I hear, is it true that it's been around $800,000 been allocated towards a lawsuit to keep it going till the end of the year? If so, I hope not. Let's get these dealerships open, stop the animosity, and move forward. We definitely need the tax dollars. And next, what I'd like to talk about, you know, back in April of 2013, I asked for information on how much our tax dollars have been spent on the lawsuit involving the West Covina Improvement Association. My request was denied. It was told to me by our city attorney, this wasn't public records. The city didn't have to release this information. Well, we all know what happened next. The city was given the opportunity to let me have the information I asked for before the lawsuit was filed. They still refused, and the lawsuit was filed. Nine months later, with a new council, I was given the information I asked for, which was public records, and I want to thank you very much for that. For everyone's information, from August 2012 through April 2013, city attorney Albert Glassman was paid around $260,000 towards this lawsuit. And in May of 2013, Squire Sanderson was paid $118,368.66, bringing the total to about $386,546. What was Squire Sanderson's involvement in this lawsuit, that the city council felt they deserved that much of our tax dollars? You know, I would like to have an answer to this question. That was just up till May of 2013. We don't know how much has been spent total on this complete misuse of our tax dollars. This whole Civic Center lawsuit most likely is going to cost taxpayers over $1.5 million. I'm hoping this new council will spend our tax dollars more wisely. Let's stop wasting the tax dollars on unwanted lawsuits, which this council has the power to end. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. City Attorney, will you give him that information?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay, appreciate that. Okay, that concludes oral communications. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Does anybody wish to pull an item from the consent calendar?
I would like to pull Items 4 and 5.
Items 4 and Items 5, okay. Do we have any other items, or do we have a motion to approve those other items besides 4 and 5?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve all but 4 and 5.
Second. Moved by Warshaw, seconded by Sykes. All those in favor, say aye to approve all items but 4 and 5.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item 4, the grant application for sustainable communities. Councilmember Spence, did you want to give a report, or?
No, I just wanted, I'm not going to vote for this item. I do support updating the general plan. However, one of the things that the resolution asks us to do is to sign off on sustainable communities planning and different standards. And some of those standards include things I'm not sure that I would support. You know, if you read the standards that it's asking us to agree to, there's things about increasing density, there's things about, you know, the types of development that they want to have, that the state wants to force us to have. And, you know, many times I've heard from here how we want to talk about single-family dwellings and things like that, and so I'm concerned about some of the standards that this grant, that we're actually signing off on through the process, that the state will kind of force us to do. So I won't be voting for it.
Okay, and I had a question, because a lot of times when we apply for grants, the grant writer, it develops or encompasses their fee into the amount of grant that we receive. Did we look at that rather than paying a grant person straight out?
Well, a lot of the grants, there's two ways of looking. Yes, you're right, that is one way of doing it, in which it's based upon contingency. Usually, they want a 10% contingency based upon what's awarded, and that is something that we can certainly look into. In this case, this was a person that we've had had a lot of success in obtaining grants with, which is Jack Wong. And historically, we've had contracted with him to prepare these, so it's just a matter of moving forward. If you want us to go back, we certainly can talk to him about making it more contingency. But the other thing is that, and it's a matter of how council wants to move forward. We can certainly look at both.
Just, I just wanted to understand what the process was. Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, so moved.
Moved by Councilmember Warshaw, seconded by Councilor Mayor Pro Tem Sykes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. So that would be a 3 to 2 with Hereford and Spence opposing, so. Okay. Item 5, Councilmember Spence.
Yeah, I pulled this off, not because I oppose it, but I guess the question I have, because this isn't, is how do nonprofits find out that the city may waive fees or different things for events like this? Rather, I guess my concern is, obviously, if someone's politically connected or they know that, you know, from past history, they can go down and request it and get it, that's, I understand that, and that's fine. But the question is, how would nonprofits know that that's a possibility the council would consider their event to be a general public benefit?
What'll happen is, for example, if nonprofit applies for a permit through the planning department, there's actually an application form that they can request that actually goes through the different departments, it's part of the TUP process. And through that process, the city manager has the authority to waive those expenditures. They find out when they make those applications.
Okay, so they're given the option of that other, the form to fill out for it to come to council for approval? Because the city manager can't approve it by itself, right? The way I read this is the council had to approve it.
Actually, the city manager does have the authority to do so.
Well, then, what's the part in the resolution about it coming for a council vote? And then why is this coming for a council vote and not simply being approved? If you go to the resolution or to the policy, right, the policy that you gave us, is it under, is it the under $1,000 issue?
Well, yeah, let me just clarify. With respect to Lions Club, staff was directed previously, although I do have the authority to grant certain approvals, in this one case and this one, we were asked to bring this to council and let the council decide on whether to waive these fees or not. So that was a direction that was provided by the prior council, and we're just following up with that. There was, I believe, a resolution in 2008, is that correct?
Right.
That enabled, gave me the ability to go ahead and waive fees, but in this circumstance, there was a request that we bring this before the council.
What is your limit on waiving fees? How much?
Actually, up to the city manager's purchasing authority, which is $30,000.
Okay. I just, I had this agendaized last meeting because I received a letter from the Lions Club, so I just think it's something that we should bring before the council. I mean, full disclosure, all that stuff, so.
Well, I don't disagree with that, but I just want to make sure that we're consistent in how we treat nonprofits, you know, and the city in having access to city services and that possibility. I mean, that's what I want to try to make sure of, and that's what I'm trying to find out. Because basically, from what I'm hearing, there isn't necessarily consistency. Is that right?
That is correct, and it's actually better that I get this clarification from this council as far as how you want to handle it in the future. And if you want me to bring all of them to you in the future, I certainly can do that. If you want me to handle it.
I didn't realize that you had the authority to do it. I thought all of them did come through us, but I would prefer that, just so we, you know. See, I don't know, maybe if it's not worth it for 100 bucks, but still, even though, I mean, I think we should see it, so. If there's a procedure that can be publicly put on the agenda or something, I think that's fine. Maybe we should review the procedure.
Sure, I have no problem bringing that before you, for then everything comes by you.
Because we do, 4th of July, we do bring that forward.
And it can be on a easy consent item, just for your review, and that way you're informed about it.
Okay.
That works for me. I just want to make sure that we're consistent in that all nonprofits have the same kind of opportunities.
Okay.
And with that, I'll go ahead and move this item.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Spence, seconded by Toma. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Okay, let's move on to item 6, city council goals and objectives. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. As city manager, I brought this forward to seek council direction as far as whether this council wants to participate in a study session to set goals and objectives. The main purpose of doing so is that goals and objectives are set by the city over time, and it's a good idea once in a while to sit down, especially with a new council, and set and review those goals and objectives to make sure that they are consistent with the will of the city council and with the citizens of the West Covina. Staff believes that in having and setting goals and objectives, we can clarify some visionary goals and understand where this council wants to move in the future, and we can set one, three, five-year goals depending upon what the council wants to do. But I think it's important that, it also helps with the improvement communication from all five bosses to me as far as what you're looking for, me to achieve, and carrying out your policy directions, and which are consistent with the overall goals of the body of the city council. So where I can, for an example, I've heard many times that this council may want more community involvement, and I think it's clear that we need to understand, what does that exactly mean? You know, we do a lot for youth already, you know, we do a lot of things for seniors. So, you know, it's helpful to get a clear understanding from this council as far as, you know, if we're all on the same page of what that meaning may be. I'm just using that just for a, an example. That may not be the actual issue at hand, but I'm just trying to point out what we're talking about. And so I'm recommending to higher consultant that could be a facilitator, and we're recommending Ray Patchett from Patchett Associates, who is looking to provide us services, a facilitator, not to exceed $8,500. In his process, he has laid out, and he's here, he's here tonight to answer any questions you may have, but, you know, he wants to do an interactive process with his council. He has one-on-one discussions with this council, just to get the discussion rolling. And then within the study session, he's going to present those findings and further help, guide, and facilitate moving and setting up council goals and objectives as a body and moving forward. And so staff's recommending the retention of Ray Patchett and Associates in order to facilitate this, and that's why it's before you tonight.
Okay, any questions? Just from my seat, the only thing I was concerned about was the one-on-one meetings. I think it's a great idea to set goals and objectives. I just was a little bit concerned about, you know, each individual meeting with him and then putting it all together. I'd rather just, what we typically do in budget is have a meeting where we set goals and objective for the next year as a body, so that way I can hear what other people are saying rather than a third party kind of bringing the items in. But it's not enough an issue that I'm not going to support this, so I will make a motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, prior to that.
Councilmember Warshaw.
The, you make a good point there, but, so I'd like to have a little clarification, because my understanding of the one-on-one is to find out what are major items and secondary items, and then for him to allow us in a meeting to discuss those amongst everyone. And so I think it was more of a facilitation standpoint, but maybe if we can have him respond to that?
Yes, good evening, folks. It's nice to be here tonight, and I appreciate your comment and your clarification. The purpose is to just collect your ideas. It's more effective in terms of the use of the time when the whole group comes together. I just list out what you think your priorities are. I don't do anything about ordering anything like that, and then we go through those priorities at the workshop, and you choose to move forward with those priorities or not based on what the majority of the council says. So, and then if you have, let's say you have too many priorities, then you prioritize them so you can focus your work and get them done in a timely manner.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Toma.
Thank you. I know that a lot of organizations use consultants sometimes for, you know, goal-setting mission. Can, since we have a little bit of time here, can you just explain maybe what you do uniquely for city organizations? I know we have all these restraints in terms of how we communicate with each other, and perhaps you have some unique perspective, because I understand you're a former city manager, or?
Yes, sir.
Can you just discuss a little bit of that to give us a better idea of what we can expect if we were to retain you?
Yes. I'm very sensitive to the fact that we have to be careful not to create a sariatum meeting, and so that won't happen. I dealt with that for 34 years, and we won't see that happen. What I typically do, though, is it's to help all of you as much as it is to collect the information. I generally ask each of you, what's your vision for the city of West Covina? What do you really want this place to be, say, five years from now? Which is a great question, because really, coming together, you're all trying to foster some kind of quality of life. Typically, then, I'll say, okay, if that's your vision, what then are your priorities over the next one, three, five years? What do you want the staff working on? Because I am sensitive to the fact, in the role from the staff's perspective, you have a new council that's just been seated, and they would like clarity on where to go. Equally important is, the council needs clarity on where you want to go as a group, and that helps facilitate it. So once I have a sense of vision and priorities, then we bring that back in a list. You can talk about it, you can own it if you want, or you can just float out there as an idea. And then once the council's decided on the priorities that you have for the next one, three, five years, we have the staff convert those into what I call SMART goals, and then return to the full council in a full council meeting, in a regular council meeting, to adopt. What I mean by SMART goals is, it's an acronym. It means specific, measurable, achievable, results-oriented, and time-bound goals. And so while the council has your adopted city council goal statements, this begins to put some focus on where you want to play. So my suggestion probably would be that, since we haven't designed the council workshop at this point, but you probably want to take a look at these quality of life goals and all of these things, and decide if that's still the council's goals, or if that's the prior council's goals. Once we get that, then we create SMART goals to deliver on those goals. Does that respond to your question?
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, could we just have the speaker identify himself, it says on the tape?
Sure.
My apologies, Ray Patchett, Patchett Associates.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, I made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Warshaw. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Move to the successor agency. Roll call, City Clerk.
Chairman Hereford.
Here.
Vice Chairman Sykes.
Here.
Board Member Spence.
Board member Spence.
Here.
Warshaw.
Any changes to the agendas?
There's no change to the agenda.
Okay, and we have no cards for our communication. We'll move to consent calendar. Do you have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, so...
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Sykes, and seconded by Councilmember Warshaw. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five o. Do we have a motion to, any comments from board members on the successor agency? Okay. Motion for adjournment. I'll make the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Warshaw. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Move on to mayor, councilmember reports. Do we have any reports from anyone? Councilmember Spence.
I did have the chance, along with many of the councilmembers, to attend some of the grand openings in the Lantern Festival, and just want to thank staff for their work in those efforts. I think they went really well, and of course, would encourage, you know, people to shop those businesses in West Covina. But I just want to commend staff for their work in that.
Okay, I think we'll all echo that. It was actually a pretty good weekend for businesses opening in the city, and actually have a new one opening this, I believe, Saturday. We just got a notice on Annapola Market in the shopping, or the mall, so eleven o'clock or ten o'clock, we know? I want to invite everybody to...
The event's going to be at eleven-thirty.
Eleven-thirty, okay. I want to invite everybody to that. Okay, with that, any other comments?
Well, I did, well, I don't know if this is the time to bring up stuff that I'd like to have discussed later.
You can come up there.
Just that, you know, I've had members of the public ask me, and we've had people talk about here, about the whole issue of concealed weapon permits, and there was an appellate court decision that struck down some of California's law on that. So I'd just like an information report, I think would be good for the public to know how many there are, how people get them, you know, how many were rejected, that kind of stuff, so that, you know, we can kind of clear up what some people perceive as an issue. And I think it'd be good information.
Okay. Bring that back to the next meeting, or whenever you get it developed. Is that okay?
That's a pretty easy request. We can bring that back next meeting.
Okay.
Not necessarily as a mother ma'am, but actually reporting out what the issue is.
Sure. Okay. Any other comments, questions? Okay, we'll move on to items, actually, AB 1234, any reports? I think we had them last meeting.
I had talked about last meeting, asking to look at televising our city council meetings and maybe our planning commission meetings, because it's what I'm hearing that the public wants, and we are trying to be more transparent, and it actually, it gives everyone the chance, though, there are some people that still don't have internet and can't do streaming, or it's not fast enough for them. So I've asked for this, because I don't think it's that expensive, and I've asked staff to take a look at that, so I'm hoping that you'll back that.
Okay, staff will come back with a report. I had two questions. Did you have a question? Councilmember Spence.
Okay. I'd like to know the number of charter television subscribers, and the number of charter internet subscribers, and I'd like to know the franchise fee breakdowns for each of them. Because I personally have DirecTV, so, and a lot of my neighbors do, too. I just want to find out what the percentage of people is in the city that have the charter services.
Well, I would add to that. I don't know if we can get the specific number, but, I mean, not only charter subscribers, but what's the percentage of charter, people that have charter television that don't have any internet service? You know, don't have any internet access, you know, to the particular things. I think that, you know, because you can have charter television and not, and get internet from another service provider, or Wi-Fi, or different things. So, I mean, so I would like to know, you know, what group are we talking about? When we're talking about it, is it inexpensive? How many people are we talking about? And then, two on that is, what is the cost to transmit, or if it's possible, the internet feed? You know, rather than developing some kind of other program to transmit on cable that may be expensive, you know, is there a way that we can integrate, if we chose to do so, the internet feed to the charter subscribers? Those are my two questions.
I'm not sure if I understand.
Well, we already have an internet feed where people can see us on internet, right? So how much would it cost to have that on charter? I mean, rather than them setting up separate cameras, or separate vehicles, or different people doing it, you know, we already have an internet feed.
Well, it's not a, it's not a fee per se. We have, we're paying for the cost to put on internet, so if they do have internet, they have that access.
Right. And how many people don't have access, any internet access, right? And then, can they just simply broadcast this on the cable? That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, we can, we could try to find out those answers. It might be difficult, because if they do not have internet, say, for example, with charter, they may have a different way, you know, that they're receiving internet either, I don't know what it may be.
Right, right. I understand that part of it, but there's two parts of it. Because the second part of it is, you know, okay, let's say, someone doesn't have internet access, and, but they have charter television. Is there a way to use the internet feed onto the charter television? That's what I'm asking. That's the second part of it.
I see.
Rather than to have, recreate two different feeds?
Well, I think what it comes down to is, if you're going to televise on charter, it's, you don't need the internet access to the charter cable. If they're already, if they're, so maybe I'm not fully understanding, because if, you know, I could see you talking about charter cable, in which there would be, would it be televised on that? But then, if we're doing that, then there's no need for internet access on charter. Maybe I'm not...
Well, there'd be no, well, no, I'm, no, that's not what I mean. That's not what I mean. I'm saying, look, we have internet access. I am against getting rid of internet access.
Uh-huh.
Okay, because I think most people have internet access, and I don't think that's what this is about. It's about, you know, I had two questions. One is how many people with charter cable don't have any internet access? Because to me, that's the real number we're talking about that we might reach. And then, the second part of that is, would there be a way to simply broadcast the internet feed on charter cable channel?
I understand now, thank you.
Okay. That's, sorry about that.
Good question.
Mr. Mayor, and, you know, would it be live at the same time? Would be my question.
Or possible, yeah. Right.
And let me add one more thing. I don't, we talked years ago about somehow doing it over DirecTV, or, you know, some of the other internet providers. I don't know if technology's changed or not, but we should ask that question, too, so, just so we know. Okay, so that's a report that'll come back. Mayor Pro Tem Sykes.
In 2008 June, when the blinders were put on, it's just unfortunate that we didn't do this kind of inquiry before we just suddenly shut it all down. That's the first thing.